Meeting, please. Uh, roll call.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Giger?
Here.
Commissioner Seibert?
Here.
Commissioner Wells?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here. If you want to participate in the opening prayer and pledge allegiance, please stand. Dear heavenly Father, we seek your help with your affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are diverse opinion here, yet we wish to reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concerns. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, is there any additions or additions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I so move we approve the agenda as printed.
Second. Okay, it's been moved second in the discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, we have no awards or proclamations, uh, recognition of visitors. Introduce and swear in the new Arc City Police Officer, Mike S.
E.
R E, uh.
Squaredo.
You're gonna do it, you're gonna do it.
Squaredo.
Squaredo, I'm sorry.
Squaredo.
You did it, good job. I hope I can. Mayor Commissioners, uh, two of my favorite things is hiring people and promoting, and tonight we get to do voting, so this is a good night for. Uh, tonight we get to introduce to you our newest police officer, Officer Esquero, but you can call him Officer Mike, since it'll be a little bit easier. But actually, the name gets, gets easier to say once he started on. Uh, Mike graduated from Winfield High School and he attended the Calway College. Uh, he and his wife Sarah, who have a son, who I believe is turning three in just a few weeks, are here tonight. Michael's been working full-time for Rubbermaid up in Winfield, and he's decided to take a huge big cut and come do something that is beneficial for mankind and do something that we can feel good about every day. So, we're lucky to have him on our team and, uh, we know he'll be a great fit for both the community and our department. At this time, I'd like to ask the city clerk to come up here to administer the oath of office. As the oath is read, I would ask that everybody pay close attention to the words contained in it.
You just wanna stand up there and just face up at it?
You go wherever. Pictures.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
For the public trust.
For the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Kansas.
And the state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve. As you can see, the oath is short, but, uh, certainly not, uh, a simple task. Holding others accountable and maintaining public trust is a very difficult thing to do at the same time. As you are going about your duties and trying to meet those ideals, I would ask that you reflect upon our mission statement and our promise. Remember always that our promise is, one, to do the right thing, two, to do the best we can, and three, to treat others as we want to treat them. I'll try not to stick you with the.
No, just there.
Yeah, we've, we've seen this happen before, the last guy fainted.
Well, it's a brandy shirt, so it has a good sound. This time. It'll be easier. All right, congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome to the biggest. Yeah, congratulations, you're welcome.
Welcome, Officer Mike.
Ow!
Welcome, officer Mike. Look out, don't have him grab you. He'll throw you in the car.
He popped my finger.
Mike, would you introduce your family? You said you brought them.
Introduce my family?
Yes, I want to see the people behind you.
I brought my wife Sarah and my son Jensen, and my mother-in-law, Joelle, and my stepdad Kurt, and my mother-in-law.
Stand up.
Wow.
Okay, on number two, recognized police officer Kelsey Hornick, uh, recent promotion to the Master Police Officer.
Master Police Officer Hornick has been with the department since May of twenty sixteen. Earlier in her career, she set herself apart from, uh, the other officers by becoming the academy class president. She has spent the majority of her career on night shift where she's built a strong reputation for being dependable and hardworking. During the time on patrol, she also came in during her normal hours and helped with recruitment and, uh, community outreach program. In fact, she was one of the first female hires that I did, and as you can see, we had quite a few females on board, and she's attributed to that, setting the, the pace, so congratulations, thank you. Uh, she was recognized as the Optus of the Year in twenty eighteen, and earlier this year, she was selected to be a detective in Investigation Unit. Since she became a detective, she's been, uh, building on her training and experience. Over the past several months, she has taken written tests, participated in interview board, an interview with the chief, and her past working, uh, product was subjected to a thorough review. We're pleased to announce that MPO Hornick has passed all testing phases and has been selected as a Master Police Officer. Probably the most important duty of a Master Police Officer is teaching new recruits. Having the knowledge and being able to teach that to the new hires is critical for the department and the city. Uh, I'd also like to point out that she is the department's first female Master Patrol Officer. And I am certain she'll continue to set the bar high and be a great role model for others in the department. This time, I'd like to pin the MPO insignia on you and hand it over.
Congratulations. Congratulations, you did a job.
I'm gonna brush you and ask you to introduce your family, too. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So, the family I brought today, my grandma Anne are here, and then my sister Kayla, my daughter Kinley and Keegan, and my husband Kevin, uh, my dad Kevin, and my sister Joyce.
Wow.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, I think this is.
We're gonna do this all as one motion.
Huh?
We're gonna do this all as one motion.
Yeah, yeah.
All one motion.
I don't know. Cause I'm gonna have refreshments now. Uh, number four, comments for the audience, uh, for items that are not on agenda. I don't think we have any. Okay. Uh, consent agenda, and that consensus of three things, approve of the October first, two thousand nineteen regular minutes and the two thousand, uh, I mean, in October the ninth, two thousand nineteen spatial meeting, uh, minutes that's written. Uh, two, approve the issuing of temporary, uh, sure of a malt of every C N B license to the Wilson Park between seven P M and midnight on October the twenty fourth, two thousand nineteen to the Arc Lotta Festival Incorporated. And the third one, approve a resolution for giving payment of certain loans made to South Central Kansas Medical Center. I'll make that motion, uh, just for a second.
I second.
I even second, any discussion? Not, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Uh, four, or there's no old business, five, new business?
New business, item A, approve employee health insurance renewal for the twenty twenty plan year.
Mister Mayor, Commission, thank you for having me here tonight to talk about one of my favorite things, and that's employees. We have gotten our renewal for several of our benefits for the twenty twenty plan year. I would like to start off with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas, that's our health insurance. It's what's called a fully funded plan where we pay the premiums, and we have had an increase of approximately four point six six percent from twenty nineteen. What we have done is continued on with the plan to have employees pay a certain percentage of the benefits with the employer paying the other percentage. The employer paying eighty percent on some benefit, eighty-five on another, and ninety on another, depending on the level of deductible. The lower the deductible, the higher the premium, the employer is going to pay less on that and let the employee pay the additional so that they can have the lower deductible. What I have done is I have calculated how much the increase would be to the employees for twenty twenty. It would be between two and six dollars per paycheck. That is actually twice per month. Not every paycheck, there are two paychecks where we don't have deductions. But the increase is not significant for the employees, would approximately be around nine thousand dollars additional for twenty twenty than it was over twenty nineteen. This causes no changes to the plan. We are still able to stay on the plan that we have been on for the last several years. Are there any questions about the health insurance?
Does employees like this plan?
They like it very much. They are very appreciative of this plan and the commission allowing them to continue on this plan. They, um, I believe that it helps us with recruiting new employees, and I truly believe it helps with retention of current employees, especially your longer-term employees. They very much value this benefit.
When you said nine thousand dollar increase, that's over the entire year for all the employees?
That's over the entire year for all the employees.
The city will pick up another nine thousand dollars.
Um, the city will actually, the way that I have it calculated, it averages about eighty-three percent, so the city would be picking up about another fifty-five thousand for the year. And the employees picking up around another nine thousand for the year.
So, the total increase is actually sixty-four thousand.
Uh, I'm sorry, forty-six thousand more for insurance premiums for the employer. The total increase, fifty-five thousand. I apologize.
How many, uh, employees are enrolled in this program?
A hundred and seven right now.
That's percentage-wise, is that?
That's right up there because we generally run about a hundred and twenty employees, maybe a hundred and fifteen at any given time.
Right up there? Okay. Okay.
How many of the employees are using the lower deductibles?
The, um, the lower deductible, the two hundred, four hundred, I have, um, forty-seven, so around forty-three percent, and then on the five hundred, one thousand thirty-nine, and on the one thousand, two thousand twenty-one.
So, you're seeing the families are using the lower deductibles?
They are still using the lower deductible.
That's good.
I believe as we continue to raise their contributions, they may migrate from that to the higher deductible, but at this time, we haven't seen a large migration from the low deductible.
Well, I mean, I know it's, uh, the, but the lower the deductible, the less that they have to come up with in a panic situation or an emergency.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, we, our goal is to keep it where they can afford it.
That's our goal.
Yeah.
That is.
And is our rate based on our use, just the city of Arc City's employees' use, or are we in a pool?
Yes, sir. We are based strictly on our utilization.
How many years have we been with Blue Cross, Blue Shield?
Oh, my goodness, I would say ten?
Yeah, probably ten.
He would work it before.
He was just with United Healthcare one year, two, for COVID.
We had Coventry, we had Coventry for one year. We had Blue Cross for several years before. We had Coventry for one year, and then went back, went back to Blue Cross, and we've been with them ever since. The employees really enjoy the benefit. We are very, very fortunate.
Mister Mayor, I move that we approve the employee health insurance renewal for the twenty twenty plan year.
I second. Okay, it's moved to second, any more discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, B?
Approve employee dental insurance renewal for the twenty twenty plan year.
Okay, our dental insurance is just a little bit different than our health insurance. It is actually a self-funded plan, meaning that we pay an administrative fee for the continual administration of the plan by Delta Dental of Kansas. We also pay the actual claims up to a maximum of fifteen thousand dollars per person.
Fifty-nine.
I'm so sorry, fifteen hundred, yeah, fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, uh, per member, per year. We are making some changes to the plan this year, which I think are very good changes, which cost a one percent suggested increase. That is going to what is called a P P O network, which we will still stick with the same network that we have now, but only if dentists are involved in the P P O network, we can use that network as well. That was a three percent decrease, a two percent, excuse me, a two and a half percent increase was possibly, um, unlimited cleanings. It used to be you can only go every six months to get your teeth cleaned. With this new change to the plan and this one percent increase, it all figured out to be one percent unlimited cleans. As well as children twelve and under can have all of their medical needs met, their dental needs met, without cost to the employee, except for orthodontia. So, that helps get, it's called the, um, Right Start for Kids Plan, and it helps children get in there and, and get the dental care that they need off the bat to get started with healthy oral care. So, the, um, one percent increase brings the suggested funding level to eighty-six thousand, three forty-nine ninety-four. The employees pay approximately thirty thousand a year of that in their payroll deductions out of their paychecks.
How, how much is that per person?
Uh, I, I don't, I can't tell you exactly how much it is per person. I'm sorry, I didn't do the math on that. Um, but the employees pay seventeen fifty a month for an individual, thirty dollars a month for a family. Those are also two, uh, two times per month.
Mm-hmm.
Um, payroll deduction, pre-tax, and, uh, we're real excited about these new benefits, about the unlimited cleanings and the children.
So, one question I have, so we're going to a P P O from, uh, I don't know what.
Premier network.
To a P P O network. Doctor Seibert, I'm gonna lean on you, this is your area of expertise, not any of us up here, I can guarantee you. What are some of the disadvantages of going to a P P O?
The main, I mean, the main disadvantage is if your dentist you're going to is not in a P P O, and you go to them, you have a higher out-of-pocket, and you pay a lot more. So, basically, the benefit for a dentist to be in a P P O is it forces patients to come to you because you agree, basically, it's forcing people to go to them because they don't pay as much. So, if you're in a P P O, then the employees will have to go to a dentist that has that P P O, not as much Delta Dental or Blue, I assume it's Delta Dental. So, if it's Delta Dental, you have to find a Delta Dental P P O provider and not a Delta Dental Premier. There are different. So, if you go to a dentist and he's not a Delta Dental P P O, and you go to him, they're gonna, you're gonna have an out-of-pocket, so.
How many P, how many, how many dentists in town do we have that?
In our city.
How many of our dentists are in this program?
The last, I mean, dentists can't really talk about what they do or not because it's.
Okay.
But I know only two that I know of that are P P O account, that I know of off the top of my head. There could be more, but two of them that I believe are P P Os, the rest are not.
Marlon, do we, what, what would we can do if we were to go back and look at this and the end was to keep the same?
We certainly can, but they, they told me that we can use both networks. It would just be.
Thanks.
Can we, can we?
So, the employer would make the choice?
Yes.
Can we, can we table this? I want to go and look at that a little bit more.
Sure.
Bring it back. When, when is it supposed to start?
It would be January one.
Okay. If, if the commission gives two weeks, we're gonna look at that a little bit, but then we'll get back to Delta Dental. I wanna make sure that we're not alienating any of our dentists in town or causing any undue hardship to our employees by switching from their P P O.
Yeah, cause I think most of the doc, the medical doctors in town are all ta, all take the insurance that the city has.
Yes.
Currently, yes, yeah, currently, but I don't wanna go from where they.
But the dentists are not, that's what you're.
But the dentists are different, yeah.
Yeah, those are absolutely different. So, I'll make sure that the dentists, we're not forcing families to go and switch dentists.
Doc, can you tell us, what does it take for a dentist to accept P P O? Is that just to sign up for it?
Sign for a contract and accept basically their.
Their rate.
What they pay.
Their, yeah, their rates.
Yeah. Well, I make a motion, we, uh, table this for, till our next meeting for more, uh, uh, review on this. Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, C?
Employee, approved employee flexible spending account administration renewal for the twenty twenty plan.
Okay, this one is really simple. This is our flexible spending account. Um, we use Surenci, which is a part of Delta Dental, and they have suggested no increase for renewal. What they do is they just administer the plan for us. This is where employees can go, put money aside on a pre-tax basis, use them for medical ex, or dental expenses that are not covered by the insurance, and we just have to have someone administer the plan that does it appropriately, Surenci does, and they are charging four dollars and eighty cents per enrollee per month, and that is not increasing for the twenty twenty plan year.
How many people uses that?
We have twenty-six on there right now. A lot of them use the maximum, which is twenty-seven hundred dollars a year. Usually, when they get started using it, they continue to use it. Some people just don't like to set aside the money, but once you get started, it's, it's a, a great benefit.
So, with that four, I'm sorry, Jay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, um, it's the employees' choice, and so it costs them four eighty, or does it cost the city four eighty?
It costs the city four eighty.
Okay.
It's twelve hundred dollars a month that we're paying for sixty employees.
Uh, it's fourteen ninety-seven approximately annually for twenty-six participants a month. There's only twenty-six.
Fourteen hundred a month, you say?
No, yeah.
Annual.
Fifteen hundred a year, basically.
Fifteen hundred a year.
For twenty-six.
Math's on it. How much, per employee, per month?
Four dollars and eighty cents.
Which would be sixty dollars a year.
For twenty-six.
Well, and twenty-six employees on the program.
Sixty times twenty-six would be twelve hundred, thirty-six dollars, wouldn't it? Is my math wrong? I'm doing it in my head, I don't have my phone out.
It's one little phone out.
Four dollars and eighty times twenty-six.
Yeah.
It's how much?
There's twenty-six employees.
Yes.
At four dollars and eighty cents a employee, that's a hundred and twenty-four dollars a year. We have twenty-six employees. No, I did that wrong.
No, that's what I got.
That's not right. It's sixty per employee, I know that much. And it should be twelve hundred and. Actually, it should be fif-
It's fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Yep, a year.
And the employer also saves taxes on this because this is pre-tax, pre-federal, state, social security, and Medicare, and so as it reduces the employee's tax liability, it also reduces the employer's tax liability, so that some, that does help take care of some of these fees.
So, is this four eighty a month per enrollee, is that like if they have kids on there, it's four eighty a month for each of the kids?
No, just for the employee.
Fouse? Just for the employee?
Yes.
I think it sounds like a great deal.
Yeah, it's not as bad as that. I was carrying a zero somewhere. That's a dangerous place to be in my head.
I will move that we approve the employee's flex, flexible spending account administration renewal for the twenty twenty plan year.
Your second.
I'll say it after, oh, go ahead. After my mistake, I shouldn't say it. Okay, uh, Karen seconded it. Uh, any more discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, motion carries.
Thank you very much. The employees thank you as well.
Uh, number two.
Consider resolution authorizing the city to purchase a two thousand and nineteen John Deere five twenty-four L, two and a half cubic yard wheel loader with attachments, for Murphy Tractor Equipment of Park City for an amount of like, see, one hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Mister Mayor, I'm with the commission. Uh, this was in our C I P pro, uh, work area, and Brian Edwards, street superintendent supervisor, and I went out and demoed three machines, well, two, because one of them we couldn't use at the time. Uh, it wasn't operable, but we went to Murphy Tractor and demoed a John Deere loader. It is well within our budget. Also, we went to CAC and we, uh, demoed one of their loaders that's well within the budget, and we went to a Komatsu dealer, and we got to look at that one. We do prior have two pieces of machinery that are Komatsu, which is our Dozer and our Trac-O, two very good pieces of equipment. But both of us felt that the Komatsu CAD wasn't user-friendly, it's too small, too tight. Um, also, as you saw in the back page, they didn't really offer us any implements to go with that. Um, we would have to retrofit the unit that they were, uh, proposing to us to fit our old A S, A S C, or A C S attachments, and those are also getting worn out as long as with the equipment, the old case loader. The Foley Equipment Tractor, those guys, they, uh, didn't offer any attachments to come with their piece of equipment as well. We would have to purchase those separately. But Murphy Tractor threw in everything. They threw in the, uh, rakes we use for storm cleanup, branches, debris, and all that stuff. They also threw in the forks that we use to unload things, heavy equipment, you know, things like that that we need. Also, the warranty that Murphy Tractor presented us is eighty-four months, no extra cost. If you look at the other two, uh, the Komatsu was only a sixty-month warranty, and the Foley Equipment was a twelve-month, unlimited hours included, but you'd have to purchase an additional warranty to go with that. Murphy Tractor gave us a better deal on our trade-in for our old two thousand unit. As to, uh, Foley, Komatsu gave us a better trade-in value on it, but the other implements that we needed would cost up the difference between the two. So, we recommend the John Deere tractor.
On that, on that, yeah, on that, uh, uh, all the forks and all that stuff, what do you think that they're giving us to you? Was it twenty, thirty thousand dollars that they're giving us?
Well, we estimated them at close to fourteen, was it?
Fourteen.
Fourteen to fifteen thousand?
Yeah, probably fifteen to sixteen, all the other including the rake and the forks.
That's a good deal.
Yes, yes. Uh, Murphy Tractor definitely wants our business. Um, they presented the best. It's not the top of the line by any means, because the CAT loader is like being in a spaceship. There's more buttons and computer stuff in there, the seats are cool.
Not a good thing.
It's, it's a nice piece of equipment, but, you know, we feel that.
Yeah, but you're paying, you're paying CAT's name on it.
Yes.
And when you have to go get parts for it and stuff, you're probably twice as high as what, uh, the other company's gonna be, John Deere.
Yes, sir. The John Deere is not by any means the bottom of the rung either. They both, all of them, every dealer offers what they call like the John Deere Bluetooth system. I mean, it can tell you that, you know, you're low on hydraulic well. It'll send you a message on the machine. CAT's the same way. It can tell you, you've got a hydraulic leak, and then they'll send out a serviceman down here to see what's wrong with it. Each one of them has their own troubleshooting method that's computerized, and John Deere actually offers, they don't even give you a key to the equipment. They give you a code. They give you a code. And you hit the start button, enter your code, and we know who's running that piece of equipment. And the water department borrows the equipment, they enter their code, and we know they're using the equipment.
So whoever tears it up, you know who tore it up.
Exactly. Whoever damages it's having a whole car.
And who is keeping track of that? John Deere or you or?
We keep track of the codes that we hand out. We can hand out up to five codes.
But is it coming back to your computer then, or going to John Deere?
It goes to John Deere, and it can come to us as well.
Come back to you?
Yes.
John Deere also is receiving information on errors, so if you take wind oil changes, are they coming down doing them, or are you servicing them?
Yes. Yes. They will do it either way, yes.
Which way do you prefer?
We prefer to have it down here. That way we're not out, but in case it does go, they have to go back up there if something major. But they sent us a shutdown signal to avoid something major coming up, and that was with, with all pieces of the equipment.
And do they offer the equipment trade-out if there's a warranted use that has to go back to which store and you're without a unit?
I do believe they will offer us a backup unit. It won't be, it might not be the same unit, could be bigger, could be smaller.
No, you don't care. Just gotta keep, keep that good.
That's a good deal.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sounds good.
That's what I was. Well, I make a motion, we can s- uh, uh, we authorize the city of Arc City to purchase a two thousand nineteen John Deere fifty two four L. Two and a half cubic yard wheel loader with attachments from Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company of Park City for a amount not to exceed a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, he's been moving second. Any other discussion on it? It's a voice vote. All the favors say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Uh, city matters updates.
Okay, the first item that was on our list, the state of community safety has been postponed. We do not know of the makeup date as of yet. Um, the Joey Avery Community Spare Report presentation will be six P M Tuesday, October twenty second in the right room. Uh, there will be a social time just before the event at five twenty five. Our Poolall Committee is sponsoring a free family film, Oz, Great and Powerful. Uh, we'll probably start showing that at seven, seven thirty, just whenever it gets dark.
On what day?
Uh, Tuesday, October twenty second.
Okay.
And we're probably gonna do that right here in the front lawn, is what we're thinking about.
That's when we, everybody moves in too, that evening.
Um.
Is there a kids over here?
Festival, of course, is October twenty third through twenty sixth next week. Uh, city hall will be closing noon Friday, October twenty fifth, for our Poolall of. Uh, utility bills um, are typically due that day, but we're extending it till Monday at five P M, so Monday the twenty first. Uh, they, they must have, Monday twenty, twenty eighth, sorry, um, have their uh, utility bills in by five P M. Uh, in order, if we're late. Um, they're gonna do advanced voting, um, starting Wednesday, October thirtieth. And that'll be at the water treatment facility. Also, you can vote on the thirty first and the first. Um, from eleven to four each, each uh, one of those days. Next study session is uh, Friday, November first. Um, we don't have a topic yet, so we may cancel it. I'll visit with the mayor and see, see what we're gonna do on that one. Um. Last thing was, um, there's all city commission study sessions scheduled for noon Friday the fifteenth. Um, and it's also at the same time that the South Central Kansas Medical Center Board Trustees Work Session is. Um, because it was pushed back to Thanksgiving, so we'll have to think about that at our next meeting and decide what we need to do for that one, if we have a study session or not. Or if we reschedule that to another date. Uh, other items um, have is, um, Larry Schwartz and myself, we've been, uh, we did receive a memorandum of understanding, a draft from the uh, county. Uh, it's not exactly anything we're quite comfortable with yet. There's quite a few changes that need to be made. We visited Saturday for a little bit. Um, one of the items on there is, it says the work's estimated to be two hundred fifty thousand. I think we need to make sure that we have a cap of two hundred fifty thousand. That way it's not open ending. We can make sure that they have to come back to the commission, um, to approve any fixes. Another item that we have on there doesn't address them have a timeframe whatsoever when these improvements have to be completed by. And so we wanna make sure we get a firm timeline on there of when, you know, how long it's gonna take to do step A, B, and C. Uh, also, there's not a firm complete by date, you know, so or, uh, any uh, language in there in regarding to uh, the project is completed when X happens. You know, when they start putting vehicles across the road, or, or when does that completion um, actually take place? Also, uh, there was no um, reference in, into uh, receiving outside funds, whether through FEMA or other grant opportunities. Doesn't address them looking into it or trying to.
Who, did they write this thing, or?
It was the county councilor, yes. Um, so we wanna make sure that there is language in there stating that they're going to proceed with all of those applications. Uh, since it is a county bridge.
Uh huh.
And then if we are, are to receive any funds, that those funds are to be split evenly to reimburse us. Uh, up to our portion of the improvements thus, so that way if uh, you know, they receive two hundred fifty thousand, we get reimbursed for a hundred twenty five, if we put up a hundred twenty five. Other than that, um, that's about it, will be mainly. I think Jim, you can take one more.
I have several things when you get finished.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, well, one of the ones you and I talked about is there's no costs, uh, the way the costs are measured. In other words, when we originally started talking about repairing the bridge, the city was going to maybe do like kind. We'd furnish a dump truck, they furnish a dump truck, and we both all gravel. Uh, the county has taken the position that they would like to do it all, which is fine. I think it's their bridge, it's their road through the township. Uh, but I think as a cost-sharing basis, we need some costs, uh, figures. In other words, a dump truck today costs about eighty, ninety dollars an hour to operate. Uh, that should be a figure we can agree to. Uh, the, the dozer, help me a little bit on dozers, seven twenty five an hour, is that fair? Somewhere in the.
Depends what size.
So, yes, it depends on size and, and so on, but I, I just think a, a realistic rule. I certainly don't wanna pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the county, thinking they did thirty thousand dollars of work. And I don't think that's the county's intention. But I've been primarily the one talking other than Nick with the county. And you talk one day and you get an agreement the next, and it's not the same discussion. I don't understand the difference yet. Uh, this memorandum is nothing that I talked about last week with the uh, county manager. And it bothers me. Uh, I don't think anybody's trying to pull anything. I think the county attorney, county counselor, I guess he's gold, uh, was not involved in most of those meetings or discussions. So I think he took it upon himself to try to draw an agreement to send to Larry so Larry could approve it. So I don't think there's any shenanigans going on here. I'd hope not. Uh, we entered into this agreement wide-eyed in front of a public meeting with fifty or sixty other people there listening to both sides. And I think everybody agreed this is a very needed highway road to get reopened. Uh, we, we agreed as the city of Arc City to participate in the cost of it because we have probably more to lose than, than anybody. But this is still a county bridge. We offered to help pay, to help the county get the bridge open. Because the township that actually suffered the most loss on the road doesn't have the funds to fix it. So the county stepped up and said they'd help the township if the city of Arc City would. The talk last week was we were leaving the term "bridge" out of this agreement. Uh, which was necessary to make sure we get the funding from the federal, the FEMA people, but these bridges fall under a different guideline than roads do. And that's what I think Nick's trying to allude to in our repayment. That repayment won't happen till next year. If the road gets fixed in the next thirty days, which I'm very hopeful it will, the money won't be back to repay us until probably January, February, somewhere in those days.
Or maybe later on that.
Even later than that, so I'll be off the board. I won't care, right? Except as a taxpayer and a resident in the neighborhood, I do care very much. And would very much like to see the county live up to our expectations and honor the agreement that they've discussed. And I think they will. I think it's gonna take Larry and Nick. Uh, so I'm gonna move, to shut me up, that we approve Nick and Larry to negotiate directly with the county counselor and county manager to get this agreement done within two weeks at our next meeting.
With a cap of two fifty.
That's your agreement. You, you work out your agreement and bring it back to us.
Well, I wanna make sure financially then we're committed to potentially up to a hundred and twenty five thousand.
I, I made a motion. I'm gonna let the two of you negotiate your contract. When you bring it back, if it's two fifty, fine. If it's two hundred, fine. Bring a contract back to us. Let us approve the final edition. So moved.
Well, I second that motion.
Anybody got any more discussion on it? Not all favors say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, so. Uh, anything else, Nick?
I don't think so.
Game starts at ten minutes.
He's like, he's gotta game, he's gotta go coach.
Yes.
To what?
Aces Polport Dinner.
Oh, yeah, uh, tomorrow is the Aces Polport Dinner, so anybody interested in it, uh, is ten dollars a ticket. It's polport, uh, coleslaw, baked beans, uh, dessert, iced tea. And you can come and eat that from eleven to uh, two at the, the uh, Brown Center, the right room on the north side. If you don't wanna come in, all you gotta do is circle around. There'll be people outside. Either buy tickets right, or if you don't have tickets, you can just pay right there at the deal. They'll come and bring your food right to your car, and then you can just go right home and eat with it. Then also at from five to seven thirty, uh, tomorrow evening, so it's a good thing for the jury for Aces and stuff. Uh, so hopefully we'll see a big crowd.
I'm gonna be gone later part of this week. Um, I'm going to St. Anderson, so I'll be back next Wednesday.
Okay.
One other comment, and I, I started to make it when you were talking the minute. You're, you're talking about doing away with two work sessions in a row, the fifteenth and the one before.
No, I didn't, we need to look at them.
Yeah, 'cause I.
The second one is the one that there's a conflict with the board trustees. We just need to get that one worked out.
Yeah.
Um, the next one will require a work on topic and, and I'll, with Jay.
Well, it may be, you know, if we have, maybe we wanna talk more about that bridge, because we got, I think, Octo- or November's when they're gonna make the decision. Isn't it the first, second meeting in October, or November?
I, I guess that's part of the game we're playing right now, is the decision was supposed to be made by us tonight, by them in two weeks.
Yeah.
Now we had to put it off, 'cause this agreement is not the agreement we talked about last week, to go back to them and sort.
I think we can get it done enough where they have something they can agree to next, next meeting.
Two weeks off. And the work session that I'm, I'm wanting to, I personally like the work sessions where we can all sit and face each other and just visit. Nobody's put on a spot, knowing they're gonna have to vote for it. You got a chance to check everybody's figures, everybody's thinking, uh, before you come to a meeting. So I hate to see two work sessions in a row be done. I hate to see any work sessions.
Well, I think, there's only one. We just gotta work the, the one, the second one is the, is the hospital.
Yes, I understand. No, I understand. I wouldn't.
Yeah, they'll move.
We'll, we'll get it worked out.
Yeah.
Uh, anything else? Is there a motion for dismissal?
Sub move, adjourn.
Second, all the favors say aye.
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 Motion carries.